I'd like to call this meeting of the Elkhart City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge? Mr. Willie Brown, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
The Pledge of the United States of America, the Republic, the which is nation of
Please keep in consideration our public safety officers. The families have gone through this tragic week we've had this week. So let's keep them in our prayers and meditation, please. Angie, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
President.
Councilwoman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilwoman Mishler.
President.
Councilwoman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilwoman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilwoman Hanke.
President Dawson.
President. Please remember that with the exception of our public safety officers, turn off your phones so they don't vibrate and make sure we up here speaking to the mic so we can be heard clearly. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes of January 6, 2025 council meeting?
Second.
Got motion by Mr. Hanke, second by Mrs. Hines for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Could I get a motion to amend the agenda to move proposed Resolution 25-0-01 to the top of the agenda? I got a motion by
Second.
Mr. Hanke, second from Mr. Mishler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Angie, would you please re-propose Resolution 25-R-01 by title, please? And in its entirety?
Proposed Resolution 25-R-01, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana honoring firefighter Adam J. Kuspa for his dedication, service, and contribution to the Elkhart City Fire Department and community. Whereas Adam J. Kuspa passed away on January 6, 2025, an active member of the City of Elkhart, Indiana Department of Fire, and whereas Captain Kuspa was a dedicated firefighter with more than 26 years of experience serving fire departments of Portage Township, Warren Township, Clay Fire Territory, and the University of Notre Dame before joining the City of Elkhart Fire Department in 2006. Whereas during his tenure with the Elkhart City Fire Department, Captain Kuspa was instrumental in establishing and leading the technical rescue team. He served as a shift trainer for all frontline firefighters and was a lead instructor at the Training Academy. He was promoted through the ranks of the Elkhart Fire Department merit system from firefighter to engineer, engineer to lieutenant, and ultimately being promoted to the rank of captain of Rescue One. And whereas Captain Kuspa's contribution to the firefighter profession was not limited to the City of Elkhart. As a member of the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System 201, he was deployed to Henryville, Indiana and Havelock, North Carolina to assist those communities in their time of need. He taught at O'Brien Fire Ground Training where he conducted courses in forcible entry, engine and truck operations, and machine extraction across the country. In Illinois, he presented training programs for duty, pride, and traditions focusing on rescuing firefighters from hazardous environments. And whereas Adam was pivotal in the success of the Lake Effect Fire Conference held in South Bend and served as vice president of the Michiana Fraternal Order of Leatherhead Society. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana that the Common Council hereby recognizes the dedication, service, and contributions of Captain Adam J. Kuspa to the City of Elkhart, Indiana, the community of Elkhart, and the firefighters profession. This foregoing is passed and adopted by the Common Council this third day of February 2025.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second? Got a motion from Mrs. Hines, second from Mr. Hanke. At this time, I'll open up the floor for any council discussion. Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to come and speak with regards to this proposed resolution? Seeing none, could we have the family of Adam come forward for a second, please? We just want you to know that on behalf of the City of Elkhart, we are so proud of what Adam did. We are so proud of him as a firefighter, as a father, as a friend, as a comrade, and we want to in a small way just show you our gratitude and thanks for you allowing him to be a part of our lives and a part of others' lives as well because he was a person that just in what I've heard made this world a better place, made the City of Elkhart a better place, made our firefighter department one of the top-notch in the country. So with as much gratitude as possible, we, City Council, and the City of Elkhart would like to really thank you for your service, for allowing him to be part of us. So thank you very much. (APPLAUSE)
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilwoman Crabtree.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hanke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Thank you again very much for what you've done. We're going to take a slight pause here so I know those of you, some of you have to get back to work, but we're going to take about a five-minute pause here to allow that to happen. So thank you.
Yeah, went out there and talked to that lady. All a jet. I don't want to call it replacement. We've hired another chief of staff and Aaron... Megan? Megan Erwin, I'm sorry. Megan Erwin comes to us, literally local, but she has worked for the City of Norfolk, Virginia in the role of community development and has extensive experience in the relationships necessary to run and be a part of our management team here in Elkhart. And so we welcome Megan to this role. And she's been with us for the last...
Three weeks.
Three weeks. So welcome, Megan. Also, today is the first day for our new communications director, Alex Autumn. Alex, would you stand? Alex is a local resident and he has had experience with the City of Bloomington in the area of sustainability as well as communications for them as well, working projects that required communication to the residents and internal communication as well. Adam comes to us most recently in his role around automotive sales. But his passion for our city and for the activities and events that have occurred in our city is quite frankly unmatched. When you get to know him, he will let you know how many of our events that he has attended and will continue to attend, he and his wife and young daughter. So we welcome Alex as well. First day.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, unfinished business... unfinished committee reports, I'm sorry. Reports of committee reports, aren't any? Proposed ordinance on second and third reading, would you read proposed order 25-0-01, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-01, an ordinance appropriating $425,000 from the Riverboat Gaming Fund to the other fund's account and authorizing the controller to transfer the funds to the Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund.
I get a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Motion by Mr. Hanky, second by Mrs. Hines. Council discussion. Seeing none, we'll open it up to the public. Is there any in the public that would like to speak with regards to this? Are you coming to speak or are you coming to just get closer to us?
Jeff Schaefer, Assistant City Engineer. I can answer any questions the council might have on this.
I think this is something we do every year.
This is a match for the Community Crossings Matching Grant. This is the funding for the matching component. Then your later action will be to appropriate the funds for the actual project. Last year, we did a Community Crossings Matching Grant-funded project for the industrial parks and West Beardsley Avenue. Our bids at that time actually came in below what we expected, so we had a little bit of potential grant funding available. So we submitted a second grant at the end of last year. This covers Bristol Street between Cassopolis Street and Oslo Road as well as the Park Six Industrial Park, which is Park Six and Lear Drive. So this is appropriating the matching funds for the project and then your later action will be to appropriate the package of dollars for the project.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Mishler.
I know last year we worked very... the street department did an amazing job on Johnson Street, just knocking that out quickly. Has that kind of been considered maybe for this as well? Or not so much?
So we use a... Sure, no problem. We use a couple of different tools in our toolbox to keep the streets up in a good condition. Obviously, we're very blessed that our street department can do paving themselves. And there are some street departments around the state that can't do that, but we're fortunate they're capable to do that. The CHCMG matching program and this 50-50 split with the state, we do go to contractors with that, but this basically lets us go above and beyond what our street department can do. And with the 50-50 grant, you know, it really does give us a boost for the funding. Over the years, as we've done the pavement asset management plan, we've significantly kind of increased our percentage of streets that are in fair and good condition. So we think this program started in 2016 and we think it's been really successful. Yes, sir. Yeah, this is... With all the state grants now, they're now reimbursements, so we have to appropriate all the funds and then once the work's complete, they reimburse us 50%. Nothing that I'm aware of. That would be a question for the controller, but nothing that I've seen.
Jamie is shaking his head no that that hasn't happened. Mr. Hanky.
Can you help me with a couple of projects? One, we have the Bristol Street Widening Project and you mentioned this particular program from Cassopolis to Oslo. And then the question was, at one point, there was discussion taking East Bristol Street from four lane to three lane. So does this play a role at all in the configuration and the upgrade of those? Or we're just repaving and taking the new roads?
At this point in time, we're not... We don't have any plans to pursue the four to three until after the Bristol Street Widening Project from Gene Wood to Kennedy Route 15 is done. At that point in time, I think we'll have a discussion with the administration about what the next steps are on Bristol Street.
I would just ask at that time that we are missing pedestrian walkway on one side of the road or other and it's very concerning to watch people kind of walk on the hill to get out of traffic. So hopefully, when that portion of it comes,
Yes, sir.
You can be involved. Thank you, Jeff.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council. No other questions? Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Aye.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
Second.
I got a motion from Mr. Mishler, second from Mr. Fish for third and final. Angie, would you read this by title, please, and do a roll call vote?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-01, an ordinance appropriating $425,000 from the Riverboat Gaming Fund to the other fund's account and authorizing the controller to transfer the funds to the Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Aye.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-O-02 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-O-02, an ordinance appropriating $777,672.50 from the Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund for the 2025 grant-funded contract paving project under the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program.
Motion and a second?
Oh, move.
Motion from Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Fish. Council discussion. Mr. Hanky, here's your hand up.
And we're conjoining that $777,000...
Oh, no.
Sorry, Jamie.
Jamie's coming.
Jamie, RC City Controller, for the record.
So actual cost, 50%? Is that the conjoining of $777,000 and the $425,000?
Correct. I believe that the amount that you're appropriating here includes the local match from NDOT plus some potential change of order contingency components.
About 10% is that?
I believe that's approximately the case, yes. Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Mr. Garth, this ordinance. Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Any other further council discussion? Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Aye.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye. Got a motion from Mr. Mishler. Second from Mr. Fish for third and final. Angie, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-O-02, an ordinance appropriating $777,672.50 from the Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund for the 2025 grant-funded contract paving project under the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Aye.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-O-03 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-O-03, an ordinance appropriating $6,017,4542 in matching grant funds for the Bristol Street Widening Project.
Did I get a motion to replace this ordinance with 25?
I'll second that.
So I can just make any motion?
Well, you're going to strike it, right?
We have a motion? Mr. Hanky, right?
For the record, we need to replace it in its entirety.
It's entirety.
Thank you.
Is that good? All right, everybody good? Okay, Mr. Fish, second. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Aye.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye. There are no ordinances or resolutions referred to committee. There are no tabled ordinances. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-O-03R on first reading, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-O-03-R, an ordinance appropriating $4,653,377 in matching funds for the Bristol Street Widening Project.
Thank you. If there are no objections, this will be passed on the second reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-O-04, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-O-04, an ordinance amending Section 5.5 of Ordinance 5746 as amended to update the local pollutant limitations as prescribed by the United States Environmental Protection Agency.
Thank you. If there are no objections, this will be passed to second reading. Would you read proposed orders 25-O-05 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-O-05, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the City of Elkhart, Indiana as amended to rezone 2807 Cassopolis Street, Elkhart, Indiana from B3 Service Business District and M1 Limited Manufacturing District to B3 Service Business District.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on the second reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-O-06, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-O-06, an ordinance vacating the east-west alley located between Thompson Street and Fremont Street and the north-south alley between Indiana Avenue and Lafayette Street, a public way within the City of Elkhart, Indiana.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on the second reading. We have no resolutions. We have no vacation hearings. We need to make some appointments, reappointments to some boards. First reappointments are for the Aurora Capital Development Commission and then also the Redevelopment Commission. Currently, these seats are... The Redevelopment Commission is seated as held by Wes Stefan and Dinah Harris. They both have indicated that they would like to continue with those appointments. Could I get a motion and a second to reappoint Wes Stefan? Got a motion by Mrs. Crabtree. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hold it, wait. Our city attorney said, did I do something wrong?
If the council would consider revisiting the proposed ordinance 25-O-3R for second and third reading today, it would be procedurally permissible. The amount of the appropriation that the city is appropriating in local tax dollars is less than the originally advertised amount. You can go down, you cannot go up. You can take it on second and third reading today. The city engineer and director of Public Utilities Requests that you consider that for today, there seems to be an imperative.
All right. Okay, we'll consider that. I want to get through these appointments first and then we'll come back. All right. Could I get a motion and a second to reappoint Dinah Harris to the Redevelopment Commission?
Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mr. Mishler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our next appointment is for the Elkhart Urban Enterprise Association. The seat is currently held by Therese Geisley. She has indicated that she would like to continue her appointment. Could I get a motion and a second to do that?
Oh, move.
Got a motion by Mrs. Hines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holtz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, can we go back to 23?
25-O-03-R.
That's R. Could I get a motion? Who? Mr. Hanky.
So in my opinion, it's a parliamentarian. He would take a suspension of rules.
Right, that's what I was going to ask for. I just wanted to be sure. Could I get a motion to suspend the rules and pass this on second and third reading tonight?
Which requires 100%.
Yes. Could I get a motion and a second? Could I get a motion?
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Mishler. Would you do a roll call vote, Angie?
Is there a discussion on that motion?
Okay, yes, discussion.
Why is the timing imperative? Can we have that, please?
So the timing, October 1, Public Works, the timing is imperative due to NDOT's bidding schedule, holidays, and our council schedule. So NDOT actually opened big at the beginning of September. They set a set amount of time that the contractor will hold the bid price and because of our holiday schedules with January and February where we don't meet back-to-back meetings, we don't have time to wait for more advertisement. So, yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
reluctantly, yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Aye.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Motion to suspend the rules is passed.
Could I get a motion and a second to adopt this proposed order on second reading?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines. Council discussion. Mr. Hanky.
So I did vote for the suspension of rules. I don't want to obstruct anything other than I don't want my name attached in a positive way to this project, not only by its cost, but because, I believe, we have a four lane going into a lesser lane. We are going to have some traffic and speed issues that it doesn't seem we have worked out to this point and I'm concerned about that safety. So I will vote in a negative way.
Any other...
And I project that it will go eight-one.
I'll give you 10 to one odds on that, too. Is there any other council discussion? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this?
Jeff Schaefer, Assistant City Engineer. Just very briefly, this is the LPA project or the Local Public Consistence Project that we first started on in early...
that we first started on in early, excuse me, early 2019. So, it's been almost six years to get to this point. We had a pandemic that set us back during part of that process. The reason for the change in funding was the Michigan Area Council of Governments was able to secure some additional funding by doing some trading with some of the other MPOs around the state. And so, that was news that we received in late December after the bids opened in early December, that we were very pleased. It was an additional approximate $1.5 million of federal funds that are going toward this project. So, we're very excited to get this project going. We have a good bid, and with your blessing, we'd like to go ahead and proceed.
Mr. Mishler.
Do we have an expected timeline?
This is gonna be about a two-year project with a start sometime either, assuming the council decides to bless the project, with a start in late March or early April.
Fish, I just, for the record, I want to just say that I get frustrated when we pass with the rules, and I get frustrated when we suspend rules so we can vote. I wish that we could always have enough time that we don't have to be pressured like this. I remember when we started this conference. Questions, you answered them all for me, but I'd just like the public to have a little more, normal amount of time to. It frustrates me that we suspend.
Thank you. Mr. Mishler.
To be clear, the change was only in the dollar amount. There was no other changes to the previous ordinance. It was only the $6 million to $4 million. There was no changes in the rest of the project with that, was there?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Fish.
And just for the record, I am for this project. In no way am I against this because I was early on in gaining a lot of knowledge and being a part of that early conversation, so. Thank you.
Any other? Saying none, thank you very much. Bring it back to the public, and I'd just like to say suspending the rules is something we don't do very often. You know, it's in our purview to be able to do that in situations like this. So, it's important that we take that opportunity. I want to support, especially on a time issue where, you know, as everyone knows, every day, everything goes up. So, to be able to exploit that, I think that can happen sometime. I understand your point, Councilman Fish, because public input is always important, but especially anytime we can get a reduction on the cost of something, even David Hanky can support that, even though he doesn't like the project. He's not voting for it. Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Aye.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Got a motion for Mr. Mishler, second for Mr. Crabtree, for third and final. Angie, would you do a roll call, would you read it by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-03-R, an ordinance appropriating $4,650,337 in matching funds for the Bristol Street widening project. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Aye.
Councilman Hanky.
No.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one on third and final.
Thank you. There are no table ordinances or resolutions. New business, would you read proposed ordinance 25-0?
No, we did that.
No, we didn't. We haven't done 25-0-04.
We are at reports of mayor, board of works, board of safety.
You're right. Oh.
We're ready for neighborhood association.
Yeah. Is there any other new business? Mr. Hanky.
Thank you.
I forgot we got.
I do note, and I would ask that, we have one of the police chiefs here, Board of Public Safety, Tuesday, December 10, 2024, in item number three. It talks about the use of the County Regional SWAT Team Memorandum of Understanding that covers Elkhart Police Department, Elkhart County Sheriff's Department, Goshen Police, and I would just like further information of how that does impact, since the city of Elkhart does have its own SWAT, how to interpret that paragraph if we do, if you don't mind. And then, secondarily, since we have two new positions that are all about communications, we'll have an introduction. That would be a learner update. We were gonna have one because we have an interim administrator in place.
David? Yes. Next council meeting. That's been discussed. We'll have a.
I'll take that one off my list.
Learner presentation.
And thank you for the Tolson Center financial report. That was perfect. Additionally, the Oaklawn Crisis Center update that has yet to be built. I would like an update there since they do have $3.5 million for that project. I haven't, maybe other people know, and I'm just out of the loop, on the 911 police fire software that we had prior discussions about. I'm not sure if we implemented that software, if we're still holding that software, but I would like an update, and I think it's important because it did cost a specific amount of money, if we actually implement it or not. I know that I had posted some concerns and called Mr. RC in regards to Concord Mall and what discussions we have had with them with ongoing project refurb timeline. I know there were some concerns there that I brought forward from the public. And then, finally, it's been seven-plus weeks. We did agree to purchase a $60,000 mannequin for the purpose of training of infants, and I still have zero reports from the fire department. You can even guess, if you don't mind, but just give some answer. The number of births by paramedic. I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? I would like to remind everybody just to check with your legislators with what's going on with regard to municipal elections and the fact that they want to move them from the odd year to the even year. Our state legislators, in their infinite wisdom, want to do that. They also want to reduce the time for which we can do early voting from 30 days to seven days. I don't know if any of you have heard anything from any of your constituency with regard to our municipal elections being where they are. I have not. I know everyone loves the 30-day voting period because it's given us more time to vote. So, I would encourage you to reach out to our local legislators, and if you feel, as I do, that this is not something that our community, that we have heard from our community that we want to happen, so maybe somewhere else, but I haven't heard that. So, I would ask everybody to reach out to their legislators, our legislators.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Curry.
Yeah, I think the 30-day window is great for people that travel. Back in my younger days, when I was over-the-road trucker, sometimes. Sometime, you wouldn't be home for, you know, 14, 21 days, and you would miss an opportunity to vote if we shortened that time period to just seven days.
Well, you've reached out to your representative. We've talked, so we just need to continue to do that, to express our municipalities' concerns with that. Okay. We have reports of mayor, board of works, board of safety, police, and what do you? Okay. Moving on. Scheduling, I mean, neighborhood association reports. This district, they met yesterday, didn't they?
Yes. The Pima Ran Neighborhood Association met on yesterday. Another good discussion. We were thanking people for keeping their sidewalk shovel because we do live in a school zone, and we don't want the kids walking in the street because there's snow on the sidewalks. But we had a special guest, our own Jimison Gazzanecchi, Parks Department, and, well, he put on a great presentation and asked these people what they wanted, and he shouldn't have done that. Some of them want a park instead of housing now next to the library. So, anyway, and then he asked them if they had any comments, they could write it on this large paper he had, and they stayed after the meeting doing a lot of writing, so I need to talk to Jimison and see what they were writing down, because it's in writing what they were suggesting. But, you know, it's always good to meet with your neighbors, and we just talked about the new people in our neighborhood, how we've reached out to them and plan to do more to reach out to them, to make them feel welcome. I know we have a couple that bought the house on Aurora and Harold, and they bought it and closed on it, and two days later, the tornado hit, and they haven't moved in yet, been working out some things with the insurance company. So, we want to welcome them, and we have another couple there. We went over and personally met them over on Aurora, but we just think it's a good thing to meet your neighbors and do all you can to know each other, and even one of our members had a new car. And we remember when Anthony tweeted, our police officer used to come to our meetings, he sat in our neighborhood one night, and he knew all our vehicles, and he said, "You went by, you went by, you went by." He said, "Five of you went by, and nobody called the police." He said, "Well, anytime there's a strange car sitting in your neighborhood, you should be calling the police where we can check it out." So, that's why we asked the neighbors, "Let us know if you get a new car. We want to know who's in our neighborhood." All right. Mr. Hanky might be riding by. All right. Thank you. He has a stretch. David has a stretch. You would know if David rode by. He has a stretch.
Any other neighborhood association reports? Saying none, open up a private of the floor. Is anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything under the jurisdiction of the Elkhart City Council that was not on the agenda tonight? Step right up.
I am a longtime resident of Elkhart, in particular, 29 years at my current address. Shawna Duchan.
Thank you.
And at this 29 years, I've experienced a lot of riffraff and good people in between. What I live across from is apartments, and there's two of them. And unfortunately, the people in one in particular felt the need to park into the yard. I had reported this to code enforcement, Jason in planning, Ashley at the mayor's office, Patty at 311, an evening with the mayor at the Concord Visiting Center, whenever that was in September, I believe. I'm not sure 100%. Went to the police about it. I touched every area that I could. It took a year and a half, and the people being inconsiderate and backing into my car on the 21st of last month, this is the police report, so I have, you know, proof that I'm not just BSing. And, you know, you can turn it into the insurance company, and then your premiums go up, so it's a no-win. However, what I had asked for and proposed, and it took my car getting smashed before it got handled, was just little stakes in the ground, much like what's across the alley from it. I have pictures of that, if anybody wants to be bored later, on my phone. And I'm very disappointed that I had to seek out so many different avenues to get to the result. I hate to say it, but it's like I just felt like a salmon going upstream because we're right on the botanical gardens. I can walk from my house, and I do, from my house to the botanical gardens. Then you have people like they're somewhere I don't want to, you know, I won't say what part of the world, but, you know, they're bringing it down, and we don't need that. Nobody needs that. That's supposed to be the historical district. And then, when you have people that go and they constantly, and I will say they were getting ticketed because I had come back down here a number of times to see the mayor's office gal, who I won't like, I'm not gonna drop names. I am gonna drop one name. Mayfield is the epitome of what a code enforcement person should be. I've worked with him, and then sometimes they switched around, and Janet, and then I guess she's retired now, whatever. But we're back to Mayfield. Mayfield's a solid guy, and people can say what they want about the code enforcement, but they really do a damn good job for only being four of them across this vast city, and I don't think they get their props. And that's what eventually got me what I needed, and now there are stakes up. I don't know what all transpired, but I do know that that is my guy for my neighborhood area, and I'm grateful to have him. I mean, I'm really disappointed that I have this giant bill, but, you know, I mean, it's disappointing. I don't feel it should have taken that long. I mean, because it, and I couldn't do 311 because one half of the apartment complex is drug dealers, so they're home all day looking out their window. The other half, she's like Section 8, she's home all day, too. Everybody can see what I look like. Don't you have to stop the car to take a picture? I mean, you know, they see me walking in the neighborhood. It's not like I'm a shut-in. So, I didn't want to take that chance because 311's supposed to keep us safe, but, you know, if I take them from different angles of my house, they're gonna know who the narc is over on Crawford Street. So, I was screwed there, and I was trying to avoid that, and I asked, you know, could we go the police route? And I know that they're too important, and they don't do that, and I didn't say that condescending. They are important. Everybody's important. And I get it. They got murders and all the rest of the stuff. Somebody parking in the yard is no big deal. But to the person across the street that really tries diligently to take care of their stuff, it's a big deal. So, you know, like I said, 29 years of being a, I'll call it an anchor. We have a lot of people there that have been there as long as I have and even longer. It just, you know, it was a disappointment, but thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. Anytime. Is there anyone else in the audience? Saying none, we turn it back to the council floor. We have no scheduling of committee meetings, acceptance of communications. Got a motion by Mr. Hanky, second by the signs that we accept communications. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, move.
Got a motion, second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.